I want to go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you can call the roll, please, Mr. Plankow.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Hatt.
Here.
Lori Kreniski.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Let's go ahead and rise to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting on the Board of Education. While the public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, it is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First up will be the approval and make a motion to approve the December 15th, 2020 Board Meeting Minutes, December, January 5th, 2021 Tax Budget Hearing Minutes, and the January 5th, 2021 Organizational Meeting Minutes. If I could have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hack. Is there any discussion? Now, let's call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Hatt.
Aye.
Lori Kreniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. And that takes us to old business, if anyone has anything. What about new business? Okay. And that takes us to the Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. First is the Superintendent's Business Advisory. I'm just looking up, as Dr. Bassett sent me some extra information.
Yes, Thursday, February 11th will be the next meeting, 7:30.
Yes, and he also said that they recently had a business advisory panel discussion, a side leadership class on January 8th. Lots of great career and soft skills information was shared at that. Like you said, the next meeting, then, is February 11th, and they're implementing a work group model this year, so to allow our business advisory members to select their areas of interest and how they'd like to serve the business. So that is it for Superintendent's Business Advisory. Curriculum and Programming, Boosters, Mr. Miley.
Okay. Curriculum and Programming, we had a meeting on January 22nd. Let's see. We talked about some new courses, career-based intervention. This is for early intervention for 9th and 10th graders. They're looking at different opportunities there. It's kind of like the old-time OWE concept, so that should be exciting for those kids that try to get a leg up, maybe, to go to the Career Center or something like that, those lines. And then we talked about a business class, which was an upscale marketing class where they're going to set up a school store and run business concepts and innovations through that, and sell in school supplies and...
T-shirts.
T-shirts.
And things like that, yeah.
Yeah.
With the printing, like...
And making them. They'd be making them awesome. Okay? And then we met in the welding lab, which was kind of nice to see the finished product. It came out real, real nice. I believe there was 14 bays, close to that, plus a teacher's bay. And at the time, the kids were just getting acclimated to the rules and things that they haven't really used yet. And we're still working on building the collaboration with several school districts on opportunities, different opportunities at all the different schools, and sharing our facilities. And then we talked about blended learning and looking at furniture requests to address some of those, the classrooms that weren't the new classrooms, so junior high and high school, that would enhance the opportunity to do blended learning where the kids work together, and they can work at different paces and all of those kinds of things. So it's not really changing any of the standards, it's just a new delivery method. And that's it for the building and brown, I mean, for the curriculum, unless, Tom, you have something to add?
Yeah. If I, if I could, Dr. Walker, could you expand upon, for the, you know, the audience that may be tapping into this later, more about blended learning and the intent and the rollout and things like that? Because I truly, I'm pretty excited about this as a prospect, and I just want to make sure that we fully convey what it, what it can do.
So blended learning is an initiative that we started last year prior to COVID, and it's really an instructional delivery method where students are doing, they're more, students are doing more of the work, and the teacher becomes more of the facilitator. So it's utilizing the Chromebooks better, it's teaching them different skills, using problems, problem-based learning. So we started moving in that direction, provided some pretty intense professional development to our high school and middle school teachers in January of last year, had the presenter come back out and do some in-classroom coaching. We were really starting to ramp it up, saw a lot of positive feedback from teachers, changing their delivery model of instruction, and then we shut down in March. At that time, we had also started an initiative, which I get, if teachers were interested and they were really all in to this, looking at how they were going to deliver their instruction differently, they were filling out kind of an application form, if you, if you were, to ask for new furniture for their classroom. So Gary and I had talked, he had given me kind of a budget, said, "Yeah, we could probably do this, we have some money set aside to do this." So they had to tell me what they wanted, to tell me how it was going to change their instructional practices, and then we were going to outfit their classroom to try some of these new things. And then, need I say again, we shut down in March. So it's kind of a revival of what we started last year. We actually talked about it, I'm sure nobody remembers, or, you know, because there's been so much between now and then. But it is an initiative we started last year that the high school and middle school teachers were very much on board and interested in, and has kind of got pushed to the back burner because of where we are at. So it's really a continuation of that, that more personalized learning that we're looking to give our kids opportunities for.
So is it fair to say it's almost like it's moving in the direction of giving every student kind of an IEP, in a way, giving them an all individual education plan, in a way, not the traditional sense of IEP, but, but in the sense that it gives each student the ability to pursue at their own pace, ultimately still make the minimum standards for the class, but that it allows them to, you know, to find ways of becoming more interested in school?
Yes. I'd be hesitant to, to, you know what I mean, to make that complete comparison to an IEP, but it is giving students much more choice and much more control over what they're learning and the pace that they're learning, but not changing that they still have to learn it, if that makes sense. So you're still taking geometry, or you're still taking English II, how you maneuver through that information and show your mastery of that knowledge is going to look a little bit different.
Gotcha.
Does that make sense?
It does. I need to come up with a different name. It's Individual Education, I can't think of a better name, but it does...
Think of it as personalized learning, rather than comparing it, I like that big umbrella of personalized learning, yes. So that kids can gravitate towards what they are interested in, but still show mastery of the concept.
Right. And then still be able to go by for a diploma and all that.
Yes.
That's, I mean, I personally think that's very exciting.
So do I.
Funded in our budget?
Is what?
Like the initiative for, for new furnishings or whatever, is that included in our budget?
It would be in the PI fund. We have funds available there.
We should, okay.
Okay. Final on the curriculum meeting, we set a date for February 19th for the next one, and the Booster's next meeting is March 2nd on the calendar.
Okay. Thank you very much. That takes us to Finance and Audit Personnel, Legislative, Mrs. Grassi.
Right. So we had a, Finance Committee had a meeting last, when, Thursday morning on the 21st. We talked about a couple of theory, you know, probably what most people would think was mundanity, but we talked about people that we give 1099s to throughout the district, and workers' compensation, and, you know, who's covered under our workers' compensation plans, and we, it's been, it's been interesting conversation. We're actually inviting Dan to our next meeting, our attorney, to review some of the issues that we have with, like, just who's covered under our insurance and things like that. And so we talked about that. We briefly touched upon the pay-to-participate fees, which we have some adjustments here on the agenda tonight, so we did talk about that, and we reviewed that, and left the recommendation up to the administration. And then, last but not least, we talked a little bit about the CARES funding, the increase in CARES funding that we're receiving. I have a feeling Gary will probably review a number of the emails that you might have seen, looked at some of the schedules that came out this week from the state regarding our additional CARES funding dollars and additional foundation payments, so I'll let him cover that. I would assume that we were going to hopefully talk about those things at our next finance meeting as well. Some of the things that we need to put on our agendas for the next finance committee meeting would be, I don't know if the board needs to actually accept the financial statements that are issued. I don't know if we do that, I don't remember if we do that.
Yeah, we don't typically do that.
We don't typically do that, I don't know. But if anybody was, like, really wanted some really interesting reading, you could have read the financial statement drafts that were issued by the state last week. Awesome. It was 95 pages, it was great reading. And then, if we can put the PI budget on our next agenda for that as well, because I just, we haven't looked at that in a while. But we did plan our agenda for the, or not the agenda, but we planned our meeting dates for the, for the next year, so we have all of those set for the year. So I don't know if those are out there on the calendar for the district?
We usually put out a notice, like, a few days before the meeting.
But we did, I think we scheduled them for the Thursdays before the board meetings.
Yeah.
So we just kind of went through and put them on the agenda for them. I don't know, legislatively, again, we've had some, some things going on with funding. I'll let Gary cover that regarding CARES funding and financial foundation payments, so other than that, I have nothing else. Okay? Thank you very much.
Mr. Hack, Buildings and Grounds, Operations, and Alumni.
Okay. I'll do the last one first. We did not have an alumni meeting, so nothing to report there, but Buildings and Grounds, we did meet on January 22nd, and we talked about a lot of things. A lot of it is pretty, kind of mundane, but, but I think that, you know, it hasn't been a particularly cold winter, but we've had a fair amount of snow, at least at times, and there have been a number of leaks in, in several of the buildings, in Buckeye and Lamuth, and at the Riverside campus. And also, we are still, kind of, still in the shakedown period for the new schools, so there have been some leaks there as well. But, but those are being addressed, and I have every confidence that we will master those and make it a watertight environment soon. You know, look at, there are some issues with, with Lamuth, the, you know, the roof is, is old, and, and so we're going to have to think about doing some maintenance, you know, some maybe replacement, in fact, not just maintenance on it, but doing some other more substantial repairs to it. Let's see, we're just going through. We are also looking to potentially change the roofing contractor, and, and that's, you know, is, is good. Rich has had a working relationship with him in the past and understands their, how they do business, they understand how he does business, so I think that would be a good, a good match on ensuring that we get the best service possible and the, and his watertight roofs as possible. There are some other things that are, you know, that are important, that are important to the committee, but I'm not sure that they warrant bringing brought up here, but let me just make sure through all my notes. And I will say this, we are looking forward already to spring, so we have been working on the, on the mowing equipment and other things in the off-season, so when, when May arrives, we will be ready to go, and that's about it. Mr. Miley, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, let's see. Nope, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Kreniski, Policy Committee and Strategic Plan.
The Policy Committee met on January 6th, 20, recently, to discuss the policy changes that are listed in tonight's agenda for approval. The majority of the changes are in reaction to regulations that have changed, whether due to health care passages or clinical passages, or changes to the Ohioic bicycle. So everything looks good, we talked through those. And then we have a meeting on February 17th, a working session. Yeah, you said it.
Okay. Thank you very much. That takes us to the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Hayles.
All right. This is just a presentation. I don't have this, actually, in my presentation, but I wanted the board to see. Again, we were observed by the OHSAA at one of our basketball games the other day, and this is the observed, Observer's report, and everything was satisfactory. We have two unsatisfactory ones that have to do with the, with the officials. So it's not us. I just thought, I'd pass it out, I mean, I'm not going to be labeled, but. They're doing really well over there. I mean, if you've been able to attend a game, you're going to see that everything is different. We have the players and coaches on the other side, the standard pushed in, it gives them a lot of room, it separates them from any of the fans that are coming in. We've been giving two tickets per athlete and cheerleader to come see, you know, to watch the games. Typically, it's their parents. We spread them out, and we make sure that we're following all the guidelines that have been handed down by the OHSAA. Let me go to the board, my monthly COVID update. Since our last board meeting on the 15th, we've had 46 more students test positive and 15 staff. One of the things, you know, when we were remote, one of the ideas that we had was obviously to come back a couple of weeks after the holiday season, see if that reduces the amount. It doesn't seem to be doing much of anything. The student numbers may be actually higher during that time period because, because it was over break, we're not so sure how many people reported into the schools.
Can Jeff view the quarter?
Oh, yeah. The total cases that we've had thus far this year is 160. We had 106 students and 54 staff. We've also had another 27 staff that were either waiting for test results or in quarantine and affected, you know, our service. And we've received a few calls from staff members, and I'm sure the parents are also interested in, in also the community about, you know, what it's looking like, how many cases we've had. So Nick did what some other districts have done, too, is put a daily tracker and put it on our website so people can look at it. The board probably heard that there's a lot of talk right now about our staff having the opportunity to get vaccinated. We originally sent out a survey, January 4th. The survey was spearheaded by the Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve. The survey was sent out just to gauge how many people might be interested, how many staff members might be interested in getting the vaccine. They didn't ask them their names or anything else, it's just they wanted to know, at this point, how many people might be interested. These surveys were sent out in all school districts of Geogee County and also Lake County. The Lake County Educational Service Centers, now the Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve, because they combine Lake and Geogee, that's why we're working together with the two counties, two health departments as well. There were 3,774 total responses, and 2,706 said yes, 407 said no, and 661 were unsure. That, again, was the initial survey. Riverside had a response of 319. I think we're around 400, or 530 employees, somewhere around there. We had 319 respond, 246 said yes, 32 no, and 41 unsure. Again, this is preliminary. This original survey, like I said, was to gauge interest, it doesn't collect any names, they just wanted to know how many people are interested in each of our districts. Now, we did send out another survey. This survey had a little motif. We sent it out to staff on January 19th, which was a Tuesday, and it closed a couple days later on the 21st. We didn't keep it open very long because the ESC and the Health Department wanted to know how many people were interested. There's, this, again, this survey was intended to provide the actual numbers and names of staff to prepare for a large group vaccination clinics established in Lake and Geogee County. I'm going to go through a couple of what those clinics look like and who also was participating. We needed to know who wanted it, and we received 354 affirmative responses.
That's really, really, really good.
Yeah. I need to put my glasses on, see. There we go.
That's a really, really good percentage of the positive response.
It is, it is.
That's really awesome.
So right now, we're working with the Health Departments and the ESC to establish these clinics. Now, there's a couple of things. Number one, still we're not sure if we're going to have nephdosis for everybody at the initial host site. Ours is scheduled for Friday, February 12th, and the Health Department will let us know no more than five days in advance, okay? One of the things I wanted to mention to the board, I haven't sent any notice out yet to the parents, but during that time period, which is a Friday, there may be a real good chance that we may have it as a workday for our employees, students don't report, students may have, be given that day to make up work, okay? No direct instruction, but teachers will have contact with them, you know, prior, days prior, to set something up. Not necessarily to give them more homework, but just as a catch-up day, is what we're looking at. When I initially sent out the email to the staff, I mentioned that it might be a, it might be a typical day, it might be a remote day, and it might be a work day. We're leaning towards a work day just because of the sheer numbers. Because at our clinic, it's not only going to be Riverside, it's going to be ReID Services, and it's also Andrew Osborne is going to be with us. And again, I will give you the dates and what schools are involved to give you an idea of how big this thing really is to organize. Second round of vaccination hasn't been confirmed yet either. Our clinic will be open somewhere between 9:00 and 4:00 o'clock on our campus here. Initially, they told us they can get 20 to 30 people vaccinated, and now they've changed that number to 50 per half hour. 50 because they're going to have more nurses there to administer the vaccine, which is good. For the likes of, like, Menner and Little Bee's, like, you're talking a lot of employees. Actually, Little Bee's, like, is, is, enrollment-wise, is a little bit larger than Menner. But to give you an example, Perry, Madison, and Fairport are going to have one clinic, one area clinic, and that's going to be on February 3rd. Auburn Career Center, Hershey, Lake Athletics, St. Gabe's, February 5th. Woodcliff, Kirkland, Mater D Academy, Cornerstone Christian Academy is February 11th. Riverside, Wead Services, Andrew Osborne is February 12th. Pageville City, Our Shepherd Lutheran is February 18th. Little Bee's Lake is February 24th and March 5th. And Menner is February 17th, February 26th, and March 12th.
Are they doing the one, one dose or two dose?
I'm sorry.
Are they doing the two, two-shot sequence?
Yes. We don't have a second date yet, confirmed yet.
Apparently, like, I was planning on 21 days.
Yeah. Again, that'll be another day, we'll probably have a workday as well. So that's, that's the update with COVID. Chuck and I have been working with the ESC and the Health Department about scheduling everybody right now. So I know some people are trying to get the shot, no matter how they can get it, to get it either through their health provider or through schools. We're just hoping that if they have it before, if they get it before the clinic, they'll let us know. They do not want to waste one vaccine at all. In fact, we may even have a waiting list.
So what's the...
If some people show up.
What's the plan to adjust? Like, if we only can get 200, like, how do they...
What we're doing is we're creating a list, and once we get to that, if it's five days before, we can let just the first 200 know what's coming, and then we have to reschedule when more become available. And I'm hoping that's not the case. I'm hoping that we can get everybody in, it just makes it so much easier to get it done in that first attempt. I asked Michelle Gifford also to provide an update on the remote meals that they've been providing. People are asked to go to a Google spreadsheet by Wednesday at 3:00, to let us know whether or not they want lunches. And we're distributing from three different buildings still, Riverview, Lamuth, and Buckeye. We provide a breakfast and a lunch for five days for each student that is participating, and we distribute those meals between 12:30 and 1:00. Riverview has the highest weekly count, averaging 80 students. So if you have 80 students and they're receiving 10 meals per week, five breakfasts, five lunches, that's how we get the 800 with 80 students and the 10 meals. November, December were much higher because of the remote learning. I also think that's probably also word of mouth, you know, we're starting in the beginning of the year, and I think more people are talking, and they became more aware of what we were doing, and that also increased it. So we're still providing those meals. January has already started with much lower numbers than we estimated. Our monthly numbers do even out close to 5,000 a state session, so the numbers are already going up when we, when we're in remote. It's that time of year also, to start looking at the calendar. Usually, I provide a couple of different drafts. The drafts this year, the guts, the middle of the calendar, remain pretty much the same. It's whether or not where we wanted to start, where we wanted to end. And we're still starting about a week later than everybody. You can see on the next page what some of the other neighboring districts are doing. Madison started on August 17th, Char at 18th, Period 19th. Menner's starting on August 24th, and we would like to propose this calendar where we would start on August 26th. Obviously, the later you start, the later you get out, for the most part. The period numbers are a little weird, but if you look at their, their schedule, you're going to see that they've really shortened their winter break. I gave this draft also to the RLA to look at, to give me any feedback that they might have, but I was hoping that the board could take a look at it as well, and maybe we can get it on a month earlier than what we typically do, and get it on in February. Also, some discussion that I've had with a few of the board members is where we were, where we are in terms of the human resource position that will commence the beginning of the school year. What I did here is I gave a timeline of how we're going to fill that position, and thank you. We're going to post the position the second week of February, that will be February 8th. We're going to keep it open for about three weeks. We're going to collect resumes and material to application date. We're going to keep it open until Sunday, February 28th. We're going to review and vet the resumes the week of March 1st, and hopefully set up interviews the week of the 18th and the 15th. Possibly, if we do a second round, it will be in the week of the 15th. And if everything goes well, we have a candidate that we would like to recommend to the board that anticipated selection will occur the second week of April. The reason why it's not in March is, is there's going to be spring break, so it'll be right after we come back. I think the 5th is a Monday, 6th is a Tuesday, it'll be probably during that week that we're going to have selected somebody. And if everything goes well and the person accepts, we're going to bring it to Board Action on April 27th. An official start with a 2/36 calendar would be August 2nd, depending on where the person's coming from or what kind of training we want to give the person. If we can go earlier, we'll go earlier.
I have a couple of questions. So are, what, how wide of an advertising net are we going to post? Are we going to put it on Indeed? Are we putting it out on, like, how we want to...
Chuck and I talked about it, Chuck.
Once we actually put it out on our Apple track, it goes on Indeed.
It does.
So it does, yes. And I'm sure that, but that's, that's what that has been happening with any posting we put out.
Yeah, I've seen some of them on Indeed, I'm just curious. And, and are we officially making that a 2/36 position?
We think that's probably the best way to go. We're going to need... We're going to need HR, you know, 24/7, so that's a year contract.
Well, 24/7 is a 260-day contract, that's why I'm asking.
Well, yeah, we don't, we have but one contract that they, all our administrators that are year-round are 236. Rich, what is your contract? 260? I think you're the only 260. Plug your ears, man. Okay, so...
360.
I'll have to check.
It is, yeah.
Is it? So the new guy has a 260. I took a couple pictures of the molding lab. This, this one is from the back outside door where the little mini dock is pointing in, and I'm sorry. And that one's from the door walking in from the wood job. And you said you, they were coming in the same day or day after we had our building and grounds meeting, right, Rich?
Yes, they were supposed to come in and do a few touch-up items that were on the list, and they canceled.
Okay.
So we're waiting for them to come back.
There's a couple of things that they need to tweak, and the floor needs to be painted. That was on us. We were going to paint the floor before they got in, but with contractors, they were coming in real soon, and we did not want to delay them if they were willing to come in. So we'll paint the floor still, but we'll be real careful about not painting any of the new equipment that's in there. We also have an update on the bandstands. They're starting doing some work out on the hill over there, concrete work, and they're supposed to have it done by, was it, well, technically, they're supposed to have it done by, in February here, but I'm hoping it is done. We have a contract where we say that they cannot disrupt any of the school activities out there, whether it's track or lacrosse or anyone, anyone else, or any of the groups that are out there. So hopefully, it will be done in the next month or two. This thing's taking longer than our two elementary schools.
To interrupt, the concrete is completed.
It is.
They're estimating bandstands in three weeks.
Okay. So we're in February. We should have a board meeting now.
Just in time for football.
What's that?
Just in time for football.
Yeah, right. It's a good thing we had COVID this year in terms of the, you know, the ban not maybe fitting down there, because that would not have been a good deal. In the spirit of the month of January being School Board Recognition Month, I'd like to read a message of thanks from the Ohio School Boards Association to our board members. School Board members make policy, they approve contracts with employees, they choose curriculum, they adopt budgets, and select a superintendent, treasurer, and business manager to administer the district. They do all these tasks with the emphasis on what's best for the children they serve. Being an effective school board member is no easy task, particularly in today's climate of change and challenge. School Board members need to be knowledgeable about many complex educational and social issues, and carry out initiatives and directives from both federal and state governments. To face these demands of governing our public schools, they give countless hours of personal time. A public school board member of education is a legislative body of citizens elected locally by their communities. Most Ohio school boards consist of five or seven members who serve four-year terms of office. The number of board members for Career Center Boards of Education varies. Members usually are formed for one-year terms representing their home districts. As co-partners with the General Assembly, which created Boards of Education, school board members are designated to carry out the constitutional mandate to administer the school system of each district. Through dedicated, responsible endeavors, school board members serve the public interest in public education, and they serve the needs of the kids in each of those districts. They ensure that decisions about public schools are made as close to the needs of our communities as possible. Their public service is an excellent example for young and old alike of a tradition of volunteerism that is the hallmark of American society. This January, local communities are invited to honor the contributions and dedication of their school board members, those locally elected citizens who make decisions that affect, influence, and direct the education of our youth. Our school board is just one of more than 700 boards across Ohio. So let's say thank you to those who participate in what perhaps is the purest form of grassroots democratic principles upon which our republic was founded. Our school board members do make a difference in our community for every child, every day. On behalf of the school administration, we'd like to say thank you for all you do. We know all the time you put in. A lot of people don't. They see board meetings once a month, but there's a lot of things that go into being a board member, and people do it out of service. They don't do it for any other reason. They just want to make lives better for the children that the district serves. So on behalf of the administration here and staff at Riverside, we want to say thank you to the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Black, what have you got for us?
All right, I'll grab the clicker real quick. I have a couple of slides, but unfortunately, I didn't print them, so we'll have to cut them out a little bit. It's not a lab, so. Slides that we've kind of gone over for several years. Every January, I like to go over our tax levies, our tax rates, as the county updates up each year. Significant evaluations go up, tax rates come down in general. And so I just kind of wanted to just put the list up of what our current levies are in effect. You know, we have several operating levies for the last 10 years. We have permanent improvement levy. We also have the phase one debt from the elementary schools. We're a total effective mileage for residential taxpayers of 34, 34.15 mils for the current correction year. That went down like 0.04 mils from last year, so it's essentially the same as the last year. This current year, 2021, is the triennial valuation update that the county's going to work on over the year. They're anticipating, they said, possibly a double-digit increase, a percent increase in valuation. So we're curious to see how that works out. You know, for voted levies, as the valuation goes up, tax rates come down, so it's not an increase in taxes on those, but it will be an increase in taxes on inside mileage. For inside mileage, the valuation will go up in tax. But usually, inside mileage is a pretty small portion of the tax. Just to compare us to other districts, Riverside is the third lowest school district tax rate, residential tax rate in Lake County, where it's 34.15 mils. This is not, could the Lake County Financing District, which is another 2.27 mils. So if you add those, Pageville City, Riverside, Madison, and Perry, we're still pretty much at the, you know, Riverside, Madison, Perry are still in the same order, the third lowest tax rates. I always say you can count Perry because of the nuclear power plant there, so that's why they're significantly lower. And usually, with Madison, we kind of are always going to raise, if we're past the last levy, it's above the other district, and handle that over the years. And you can see, you know, Littleby's, like, they passed the levy this last year, so they're now at 51.9 mils. And Wickliffe, who passed the large foundation to build the new K-12 campus, they're at 63.81 mils.
That doesn't include a bond, does it?
That includes a bond.
It does.
Also, ODE comes out every year with called the Cup Report or the District Profile Report, and this is a report you can pull from ODE at the link on the bottom. They have all kinds of statistics in there you can look at, and one of mine I look at is always state revenue per pupil. And it kind of shows that Riverside receives the second lowest state revenue per pupil in Lake County, other than Kirtland, which is the lowest. Ironically, Perry is the second highest, and that's because of potential personal property tax, which was listed from the state from that tax that was phased out 15 years ago, or however long it was, that they still get some reimbursements from that. So that kind of shows us where we fall in Lake County. But the other one I always, the most important one I look at, I always look at expenditure per pupil, so how much are we spending per kid? We are the second lowest in Lake County at $10,814 per student. The state average is 12,691, so we're below the state average. We're second lowest in Lake County. If you were to add Geoghan and Kaioha County to this list, we're still second lowest. We're in fact, we're a little too counties below, so we're, we're in a good spot as far as, you know, compared to our peers. You can see where, you know, Perry and we live are toward the top there. My previous district, Warren, when I was the assistant, they're the highest in the state, and they're at, I think, 24,800 something per student.
Wow.
It's dramatically different.
You know, the expenditure per pupil, people should understand, not having it be that, like, where it is right now, it's not necessarily a bad thing. Like, at the end of the day, I look at that number and I say, I don't know, we do great things, but we're pretty gosh darn efficient. So I think that's a testament to what goes on in this district and the administrative, you know, decisions that are made and fiscal decisions and whatever. So it's not necessarily how low that number gets, it's how we manage those dollars, and I think we do a great job with it, so.
Which is always important, the benchmark to see where we fall in other districts as well.
Right. And just to echo what Mrs. Gossi said, it's, you know, everybody coming together and doing a great job and creating value for the students and value for the taxpayer and doing the job that we've required to do, but doing it in a way that is, that is, that's fiscally efficient. Truly, truly wonderful.
And one thing I wanted to bring up is unemployment fraud, which is out of control right now across the state. There has been fraudulent claims filed everywhere. We just had two come in this week for current employees. So I wanted to put this slide up because the Health Department of Job and Community Services on their website, which had the unemployment link, was there. If you are a victim of unemployment fraud, you can go to their website, there's a link there with the report identity that you can file with them, so, you know, that your identity has been compromised, and, you know, someone's filed unemployment on your behalf. There's also a what-to-do checklist on the other link, it kind of says what you should do if you're a victim of unemployment fraud. We've had several here at Riverside, there have been, you know, emails flying across the state from treasurers. There've been treasurers that had their, gotten unemployment claims for themselves, and so there's, there's some type of data breach out there that someone has all these social security numbers and information and applying these claims. They pretty much haven't been handed to anybody.
So if I'm hearing correctly, it sounds like it's not...
It's not a Riverside specific thing, it's a state-wide...
Right, it's not necessarily people associated with Riverside doing it, it's people who have gotten information illegally and then submitting claims for existing employees. Is that correct?
Yes.
My 87-year-old mother-in-law had a pandemic unemployment claim filed under her social security number.
Right.
We had five of them filed at my office in the last, like, week and a half.
It's really random.
If you, I would suggest to the public and to anybody here that if you, if you get unsolicited debit cards in the mail, please be leery of that. Make sure that you do not call and, you know, authorize the opening of those debit cards because that's where they want to deposit your funds. Make sure you call, like, immediately when you, if you get something like that in your mail, please make sure you call Ohio Employment and put your name on that fraud list. It is, it's absolutely crazy, the amount of, like, we go through Experian through our office, and they are inundated with this right now. They can't even keep up with the amount of fraudulent claims that are being made.
And it's...
And you want to get, you want to nip that before you, before they start distributing money to somebody, because that's a 1099 that comes to you at the end of the year.
And we, it's funny, the first one we had was actually back in the spring during the mandated school closing, and we had one for a teacher. We called the teacher up, we're like, why did you file unemployment? You're still remote teaching. And he's like, I didn't file unemployment. We got noticed that you are. And that was the first we got, I think it was probably back in April, but now it's starting to pop up even more and more at this time. So the other link on there, what-to-do, they have a nice little page there that kind of has some advice. First thing they want you to do is file with them to let them know that, hey, it's happening. They also said if you do, if you do receive a 1099G, which is the form of the tax form that people receive, and said, hey, kind of like W-2 or something like that, says, hey, this is how much unemployment you're receiving, you never actually filed unemployment. They said you can still file your taxes, but don't include that amount, and that you should be okay, but you want to make sure you file with the Department of Job and Community Services to make sure that it gets investigated and they eventually issue corrected, corrections, so the IRS isn't coming after you a couple of years ago. Why didn't you pay tax on this when you never actually received those funds? And also, they recommend...
Document that to the mail.
They also recommend that if it happens to you to put a freeze on your credit reports, on that link will give you the full numbers for the three creditors and also the other states. It's funny, the former Honorable States, the Attorney General Yost put out a press release, I think last week, asking Congress to safe harbor Ohio for unemployment fraud, so if you are a victim of fraud, you don't end up being penalized for not paying your taxes to the federal government, or if they find out, you know, when these things are in dispute. So there's, make sure that people aren't harmed, is what they're working to do now. California, they have a similar issue, but probably more severe, and they've had, they've confirmed over $11 billion in unemployment fraud in California, with potentially up to $30 billion, not million, a billion with a B. So it's, it's everywhere, it's every state, it's, it's got to be some major data breach with the credit bureaus or something, and something that's out there that it just can pass along. So that's all for the slides, but I do have some other additional updates that Mr. Gossi mentioned. Audit is complete, that will be released with the following in a couple of weeks. We didn't have any management letter of comments or deficiencies or any question cost. We did have a repeat verbal comment for our credit card policy, which is revised on tonight's agenda, and it was nothing that we were doing incorrectly, we just wanted something clarified in the policy recommendations as far as, you know, what happens if a card is lost or stolen, or pretty much clarifying that only the treasurer's office issued cards, which we were already doing anyways, but we're like, our policy doesn't say how to contact the treasurer's office, and I'm like, everybody who works here knows how to contact the treasurer, but then we had to put it, but we updated the policy, we put in there that contact is by email or phone, just so it's, you know, to satisfy the IRS. So that ought to be released soon, and we should still qualify to Honorable State Ward and we'll find out. We were also awarded a third, a third year of the Attorney General Safety Act goes to all the school districts, so we're rewarded $21,630 on tonight's agenda for approval, and Dr. Mockers is working on a training program that we're probably going to do at the beginning of next school year to utilize those funds. There's also, Friday, Governor Delany assigned, signed an executive order 2021-01D, and that was to restore state funding cuts to us, so basically reducing the cut for this year. So as you remember, last year, late in the fiscal year, we cut like $1,100,000,000. Then in June, they passed House Bill 164, that gave us back $180,000. So we were at a net loss of about $937,000 last fiscal year. They carried that forward to this year, kind of as a placeholder, because they weren't sure what they were going to do, so that state revenues were coming higher than expected to return, you know, about half of that cut back to us. Now our cut is only around $423,000 this year instead of $930,000. We also received a shipment from Work Bureau Workers' Compensation of 2,000 masks. This is the second shipment, we've gotten a shipment in the past of 3,000-some masks for our employees or anybody that can use them here in the district, so we'll be distributing those out to the buildings. We're also looking at our investment account, Red Tree Investments, our operating funds. Now that the interest rates have dropped so low, you know, Star Ohio is not cutting any loans, now we're getting 0.09% to the funds with Mr. Nelson's help with Red Tree Investments, he can really get us up into the 0.25, maybe 0.3% range, which, you know, better than 0.09, but, you know, it's, it's a sad change from where we were less than a year ago. We were getting close to 2%, we were earning somewhere around $30,000 in interest, and that's pretty much equivalent to nothing. The other large I had to talk about is the additional CARES, CARES Act, it's actually called, this is official name, the first round... It's actually called, uh, this official name, the first round was CARES Act of the stimulus funds. The second round has a slightly different name, but we are, we're allocated about four times the amount of federal stimulus money that we were back in early March. Uh, so our, it's called ESRT two elementary secondary school relief fund. We are allocated one million six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in this round of stimulus. The finance committee is going to continue discussions of how we're going to spend those funds or utilize those funds uh, because we've talked about potentially new ideas that we can do with that or supply to general fund expenses. Uh, one idea that I even talked to the finance committee about is food service fund is, is struggling because of the circumstances of COVID and meal distribution and things like that. So we're going to work through those challenges and figure out what's the best way to utilize those funds, uh, strengthen the position of the district and make sure that we're, you know, doing the fiscally proven thing with those. Uh, and also making sure we're following all the federal guidelines that come with these funds. Does it, you know, does it, you know, if what we want to do fits into those guidelines or do we supplant the general fund, free up general fund dollars and then use general fund to do anything unrestricted as far as what we want to work out? So we're going to have those discussions and do in more detail. You know, and this helps us offset our funding cuts and help any, any other financial projects. So there's a lot of opportunity there with the due to some good things. And lastly, the evolving change orders, I figured I'd go over once we get to the consent agenda for the bill.
Mr. Black, so if I, if I understand correctly, the, by the time we count in, um, the restoration money that we're getting for the foundation payments and the dollars that we got from workers, our, our general fund pretty much is, is, is made whole because those, those monies were all unexpected dollars that came into the general fund, um, which we had already budgeted for those cuts. So actually, our general fund is probably going to look a whole lot better than what we had anticipated, um, is what I'm understanding. And that is why I think I, I sent, I sent Mr. Black going to email, I, I don't know if it was this morning or if it was yesterday, just kind of asking some questions about that and, and if we could put this CARES, these CARES dollars on the agenda of the finance committee to review what we can do with those dollars and, and what kind of, I don't know, what kind of initiatives the district would like to pursue because it's, it's almost like it's extra funding that we didn't have, that we didn't anticipate and while the, the general fund is already being made whole by these other dollars, that I think we have a great opportunity, um, to look at those dollars and what we do with them. So, so we're putting on the agenda for our next meeting. That's pretty awesome.
We did have the, we did the number by your forecast. We did have the fourth of top three being projected in there, but we obviously did not have anything as far as state funding budget reduction reductions. So however you want to call it, returning funds to the district. We also didn't anticipate, uh, the second stimulus package that's, that had been talked around, talked about for many, many months. And finally went through and I think it was, you know, I think the, us traders have been this for a while and are usually pessimistic. Usually they take something away, they never give it back and find out that they gave us funding back and get the stimulus funding. It's like, we're like, are you sure? Are this real? Are you actually going to give us these funds? And, and it's, it's, it's a, it's a good position to be in. You know, it really helps us ensure that, uh, it lessens the fiscal impact of COVID. You know, we had, you know, additional staffing this year because of running two separate programs. We had all the expenses for sanitizer, dust shields, plexiglass, all that stuff. So it's good to get those funds to support those, you know, I think, you know, obviously we don't know how long COVID is going to continue, but you know, it's, it's, I think we're in, we're in a good place now that we're in a stable, strong position.
So two questions.
Yeah.
The COVID stimulus money, can that be used to subsidize some of the additional staffing and, uh, like in the bus garage and in maintenance or?
Yes, yeah. It's a, there's a holistic categories and, and a lot of it, you know, some of it is you can use it for IDEA special ed. But we have the federal plan from that and we, you know, we, we, we have a plenty that we don't need to.
Right.
We don't need, use for those purposes. Some of it's, you know, training, you know, sanitizing type of things and then there's PT stuff, but there's a, there's, you know, mental health services. We already have student wellness success funding that is funding that, you know, so they're still up there. But then they have a catch-all at the end, other activities necessary to maintain operations and continuing, continuing the services and also to continue to employ existing staff. And continuing to employ existing staff is about as wide open as you.
Oh, is there a deadline by, that we have to spend that money by?
It's September of twenty twenty-three.
Oh, so that's, that's.
We have quite a time.
Funded.
The first round of funding we had until September of twenty twenty-two, those funds had already been spent. Uh, it was, it was four hundred and thirty-four thousand.
That's great.
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. The take list takes us to published participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves on their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Very good, that takes us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. Finance and audit is first.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on finance and audit consent agendas recommended by the treasurer, items A through G. One second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on any of those agenda items? I think we've already talked about most of these, the grant acceptance, uh, um, grant acceptance.
Ten dollar non-just.
Yeah, other than that. Um, if there's no discussion, Mr. Black, can you call the roll?
Linda Gracie?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Whiskey?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye, motion carried.
And we have also a motion to approve a reduction in pay to participate fees for the seventh and eighth grade winter cheerleading season to seventy-five dollars per student due to the extenuating circumstances caused by the COVID nineteen pandemic due to the significantly reduced number of events and minimal costs incurred by the district. The Board of Education authorized the treasurer to issue refund as necessary. You have second.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? This item, this was the item that we had discussed at the finance meeting.
One, one thing I want to mention is if you look at all the different sports and activities that were in the fall and also thus far in the winter, this one was significantly reduced. I believe the, uh, the average schedule was a sixteen to eighteen game, uh, schedule and they were able to chair at four of them. That's why we're, we're, we think it's just the right thing to do is to reduce.
There's no other discussion, can we call the roll?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Laura Kuduski?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Upstain.
Linda Gracie?
Aye.
Motion carried. Personnel.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through G. Thank you. Do we have any discussion on that? No, can we call the roll?
Laura Kuduski?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Linda Gracie?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We also have item I, which is to approve the following athletic contracts for Camille. I'm going to, I'm going to butcher his name. Sven Gross?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Limited faculty manager, um, Guy Reesby wrestling seventh and eighth grade, um, and Lance Franchek for wrestling seventh and eighth grade. Seven second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, if we don't have any discussion, can we call the roll?
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Upstain.
Linda Gracie?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Laura Kuduski?
Aye.
Motion carried. Curriculum and programming.
Motion to approve item A listed in the curriculum programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
One second.
Thank you. Any, uh, discussion? Okay, go ahead, Gary.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Linda Gracie?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Laura Kuduski?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Yeah. Well, am I reading the?
MC?
Yeah, I see that, I don't know, meaning all that verbiage to our names. Okay. Suspension of GPA requirements for balance of the twenty twenty-one school year. Um, let's see. Being resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent, the school's Riverside School District Board of Education hereby directs the students GPA, or excuse me, uh, grade point average during the twenty twenty-one school year will not be used to determine eligibility for participation in interscholastics athletics during the balance of the school year. And, uh, first quarter of the twenty-one twenty-two school year due to the negative impact of the COVID on the learning environment throughout the twenty twenty-one school year. Finds that the determination is to, is in the best interest of the students at the Riverside Local School District. Students have that eligibility for participation in interscholastic sports will remain subject to restrictions that may be imposed by Ohio High School Athletic Association in the future.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I have one question. This is also what the Ohio High School Athletic Association has mandated?
They, they have two different requirements. One is school board policy, where you have to have a one point seven five.
Yeah, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, did they extend it out into next year?
No, we put that in there because, again, your eligibility is based upon the prior quarter. So you can't not have those requirements.
I got you, yeah.
Yeah, so that's why it's carried into the.
And that's why, okay.
Yeah.
But, but then the next question to that is if the state doesn't waive the requirement.
They're still on the hook for that requirement.
For the misstatement.
That is correct.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we, we, we put together a lot of different verbiage to try to encapsulate everything that we, that we might face.
And just for anybody who might be viewing the, the video later, can you just elaborate on why we are moving in this direction?
We found that, uh, in any given quarter, we have about the same amount of students that may become ineligible, uh, during interims and, um.
Based on GPA?
Yes, based on GPA. And, uh, we found that this time around, we had double. And, uh, in investigating, we found that there's a lot of different issues that are facing the kids that, um, uh, that are challenges because of the COVID. And, um, we've had some discussion with parents and we decided, um, that only for the remainder of this year that we would suspend, uh, the requirement and still allow the kids to have at least some type of normalcy uh, in their activities at school. And, um, basically it's because of mental health. I'll be perfectly honest with you. It's just, there's so many things taken away from kids right now. There's so many stressors that, uh, we're going to do in as much as we possibly can as a, as a school and as an administration to help these kids along. It isn't to suggest that their grades aren't important. We've had discussions with the families to let them know that they, they need to really buckle down and start working hard because, uh, you know, come next fall too, it, it might play a factor in whether or not they're eligible. Especially through the Ohio High School Athletic Association.
Yeah, that's what I, I was going to emphasize because they're the ones that really are going to be the ones that are the stipulators to who plays and who doesn't.
You, you have to have, you have to be both requirements. The requirement of grade point average requirement, the HSA says they have to be passing at least five or four. So if you have seven, you're passing five, you're good. If you're, have seven, six classes, you're only passing four, you're not.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, Gary, please.
Linda Gracie?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Laura Kuduski?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Upstain.
Motion carried. Billings and grounds?
Motion to approve the items listed on the billings and grounds, uh, consent agenda, items A through K, as recommended by the superintendent. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Mr. Martin, any, any questions?
I was going to run through the change orders real quick at the very first. The board, uh, obviously the very first one is pillar escalators for the band features. It's actually a negative change order because there's a credit for burn related, this is not part of the project. It was in the increase for the additional site works that actually approved it maybe negative, downward in the cost that put in those, uh, pillars on there for the band features. Uh, for the welding project, there's nine change orders on the list. I'm just going to run through them real quick. First one is concrete pad division, that was outside. The payment was a little bit larger than anticipated and within respect, there was just a addition to the concrete pad outside the house. External equipment. Change order two was to demo the ceiling that was in the welding lab. That was not part of the scope of the project we first started. When we got in there, when they were starting construction, we can't keep the ceiling in here. So we requested that we take the ceiling down. Change order three was to provide new lighting. Lighting that needed replaced, but wasn't included in the project. We decided to replace that lighting, so that's the cost to add the new lighting in the project. Uh, change order four was some electrical panel work that was needed, uh, some new circuits for the existing equipment that was there. Uh, because there's a lathe and applied claywork and drill process that was staying behind and also air compressor that was replaced. There are additional much work that needed for that. Uh, change order five was changing door hardware for the door that we added on the, on the back corner. Uh, adding a crash bar to that door for safety purposes. Uh, change order six was to increase the size of the surge detector for the equipment that's in that room. Small change order. The biggest change order is change order seven. Uh, this one's the one for twenty-nine thousand. This is additional electrical, um, revisions that were needed to the project based on the equipment that came from Lincoln Electric. And this was a situation of what comes first, chicken or the egg? And once, you know, TDA did their work and engineering, they got the project and then Lincoln Electric looked at the electrical and said, we need these certain requirements for the electrical to run this high-power equipment. Plus we changed the type of welders we were going to get, uh, and the new model was coming out. We weren't sure if it was the mountain time it came out. So all those factors and some reworking of the electrical, um, there's about three hundred hours of additional electrical work that was needed for the project. Uh, so that's how that change order came out. There's about six thousand dollars or so for the equipment that needed for electrical changes and a hundred hours of additional work. Change order eight was, once they put the new lighting in, they put the new welding booth set, the roofs in the back were too dark. So they put the curtains up, so they added some lighting across there and another lighting for the electrical panel. So there's additional cost for that. Um, and change order nine was to add R nine CO2 lines to the teacher's desk that was not in the project before. So that was the nine change orders. There are three more outstanding. Um, one is the, on the outside equipment, uh, we spucked out a chain link fence with like black slats around the equipment. We decided to upgrade that to really white money old fence to kind of match what's behind the board office, um, so it's kind of consistent. Uh, that's probably somewhere around four thousand dollars. Actually, about thirty-five hundred, I mean, thirty-five hundred and four thousand dollars for that. Uh, there's one thing they had, electrical receptacle outside by the tanks, where the air gas tanks are out there. We don't put the cost of that, but probably upwards of two thousand dollars or that positive. And then, um, for the new air compressor that is in there that they put in, that's between the two labs. It has a drain for the water that drains out of it, but there's no drain in that room. So they want to add a drain. We don't have to do that, they can manually give it on a regular basis, it's ongoing maintenance, but it makes more sense to, to have a drain there. So there's, there's a big price to add make that. Not as raw material expansion in the project, but this is.
So can I ask a question? How much, how much was this project originally bid for?
It was, the, the project was two hundred and thirteen thousand.
Right, two hundred and thirteen thousand. We just added fifty-six thousand dollars to this project and we have additional outstanding work for it. The only thing I, I, like, I understand the need for the changes, I understand all that. My concern is that, that we started a project that was under bid now by fifty-six thousand dollars that we had not planned on spending. And that's the architect that we chose for, like, I, I ju, that just concerns me. Like, at the end of the day.
Like, at the end of the day, I wanna make sure that we end up addressing that if we move forward with a, with a facility. Just put that out there. That's, that's a lot, that's on a two hundred and thirteen thousand dollar contract.
It's almost a fortune.
You know, like, like we should have, we should have considered some of these things, not all of them. I understand, like, but there are some of these that we should have been building.
They did come in lower than expected and it was, it was like an agency built into the project for some reason.
I thought Lincoln was helping us with this, it sounded like they cost us a lot more money.
Right, we paid more for the equipment, like, and I, and again, I understand all that, like.
So the Lincoln piece of that was, Lincoln was not ever, they are not in the practice typically of providing help to schools because everybody asks them, always. And so they are very tight with their dollars, so I, I didn't, didn't, we got a good price, we got school pricing, you know what I mean? But we did it, there was, they're just not in the practice of that because they are the only facility that offers this kind of equipment. And everybody's asking for a handout all the time, so.
I don't think we asked for any, I mean, we paid, we paid for the equipment, so it's not like we're asking to. And I don't think, I don't think, this has nothing to do with the equipment, this is, this is actually the construction cost that is outside of, um, the equipment cost. So again, it just, it just concerns me, I wanna make sure that we put that out there, that we, we continue to try and, try and be better on the up breadth so that we don't have lots of change orders on a backend project.
And the, like, the, the ceiling and the lighting stuff were district decisions to make those changes. They weren't included in the original project. You know, and it was a little bit of a challenging project because it started with Dr. Malacker and Jim Haffa. Then COVID hit, Jim Haffa passed away, we had a change in maintenance director as well. And all these other, certainly, you know, so it was, it was, I think it, you know, from what we, what we actually got and it was on time and, you know, it's a, it's a great opportunity for our kids. I think with all of the unusual challenges that hit this project, I think it, you know, it's looking unsuccessful. And, you know, the, the obviously the big electrical one, that, that's probably the most, you know, that's probably the hardest change order as well. A lot, a lot of those stuff was tweaks that were made. You know, and if you think of our construction project with elementary schools, we had a hundred and forty-nine change orders on that project. When it was all set and done, so it's common to have change orders, not like we were changing your entire thing. Now we're approving these things and we're approving these things, but it's, it's.
But it wasn't twenty-five percent of the contract. Um, so are these, are these change or, these changes are already done? I mean, they, we've already, we've already done this work, so it's like, we're coming to the board after the status as well, so that is also like a concern.
It's, it is a concern as well.
Yeah, so let me, I, just, I mean, this is all legitimate and I'm concerned as well about the, the overruns. But, uh, Dr. Kalas, who was, who was the teacher? I had a, I don't know if you recall, during the meeting, I had a chance to speak with the teacher and I, I, when it comes to names and faces, the only thing I'm good at is forgetting them.
It was Mr. Blake.
Mr. Blake?
Blake.
Blake. So I did, Mr. Blake came back in between the, uh, curriculum and Billings and Grounds meeting. And, and I, he walked me through the different capabilities of the, of the welding equipment that we have, the different welding techniques, um, uh, you know, the different, well, how you use gas and ones, you know, different gases in different situations. And, and just how, I mean, I really think we have a, a, a top-notch facility and I, not to excuse the.
I agree, it's, it's awesome.
Yeah, and, and then one of the things that he mentioned, even without this setup, he had previously worked with a, a Riverside graduate who's now working for a company in the area that provides components to the Navy in their nuclear program. And, and, you know, for those who aren't involved with the Navy, if you are welding in the nuclear program, you are among the best in the world because the, there is no, there's, there's no joke in, in the, in the nuclear Navy, right? On submarines, on carriers or what have you. And, and so if we were able to produce that kind of an outcome for our students without the lab, I, I, you know, I think we, we're creating true opportunity for students in the future. And, and again, not to excuse the overruns, but I, I think we really are increasing the capabilities of the school. Any other discussion? Can you call the roll, please?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Laura Kuduski?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried. And last, that takes us to the Board of Education update. Anyone has got anything to discuss? Okay, with that, um, our next two meetings will be, we've got a work session on February seventeenth at seven PM to discuss the strategic plan and the normal business meeting on February twenty-third at seven PM. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight fifteen PM, if I can have a second, please.
Okay.
Mrs. Grassi, full roll, please.
Laura Kuduski?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you all.
Thank you.